Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to an end. I will now make the pledge of allegiance and I would like you to follow along silently. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor, Trustee Bussino?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
We must have lost Trustee Smith. Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
Supervisor Dunn, I would allow a minute for maybe Ms. Smith to get back on because I know she was up. She's back? I'm sorry, I was picked up, I had a call in. Okay, Trustee Smith?
Yes, I'm present.
Okay, all members are present.
Thank you. We will now approve the agenda items. Ms. Posey, I don't think there are any additions or deletions, is that correct?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Charlie Oliver here. I got one item, item number 10, on the MNRFT grant application. I think that should be removed because we're only doing essential business and I don't feel that's essential business. I think we could handle everything after we get back into regular session. So, I'm making a motion to move item 10 off of the agenda.
I will support that motion. That's just, uh, Smith?
Madam Chair, this is Karen Goodhue. Isn't there a timeline on that grant?
It has not been determined yet, no. The Governor has granted an extension, but no further word on it.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Oliver and supported by Ms. Smith to postpone this issue until we get back to some sense of normalcy. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Posey, would you call the roll for that?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bussino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
Yes, thank you. That motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the bills, as usual.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes, this is Nancy Nevers speaking. Madam Chair, I would like one item removed from the bill run and that would be the Foley Mansfield invoice. I understand that the supervisor has permission without a vote to pay a bill up to $5,000. This one is for $6,932.50 and we have, to my knowledge, we have not voted to bring Foley Mansfield on board as our legal counsel. I would like that removed, please.
What one is it, Nancy? Is there a number or anything with it?
Well, I have a invoice in front of me.
Okay.
It says, it's just an invoice that's dated 3/27/2020 and there's backup here that I got from Stacy, but it's really difficult for me to pick out an invoice number on there.
Okay, that's all right.
Because the printing is so small.
Okay. I didn't catch the name at the beginning.
Foley Mansfield.
Foley Mansfield, that is her name.
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Bussino. On the bill run, that would be vendor number 10281. I'm looking at the bill run right now.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so noted.
And then, Madam Chair, if there are no other issues with anything on either bill run, I move that we approve both runs.
Motion by Ms. Nevers.
Support, excuse me.
Supported by Ms. Bussino. Clerk Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bussino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Dunn.
I will vote no on that. But the motion does carry. All right, we will then move on to the previous meeting minutes. We have two sets here from March 27th and also from April 8th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Madam Chair, this is Christie Posey. I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from March 27th, 2020, and April 8th, 2020.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Karen Goodhue supports.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Treasurer, or Trustee Bussino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn.
Yes, thank you. Now we have public comments. Wish to speak to the board? Please indicate.
Madam Chair, you have to address the consent agenda items first.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You need to address consent agenda items first.
Who's making, Karen, is that you?
Madam Chair, this is Karen Goodhue. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Christie Posey, support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to confirm the consent agenda as presented. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bussino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we move on to public comments. If you wish to speak, please give your name and remember that there is a three-minute time limit.
Yes, that if you wish to speak, please dial *9 on your phone to raise your hand virtually and we'll call any time. Right now, we're going to do Charlie Missig.
Anywhere near?
Yeah, Charlie Missig? Okay, I guess we'll move on to the next person.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out how to mute it, unmute it, whatever. Okay, this is Charles T. Missig, 16884 Kenneth. Okay, I would like to start by saying that we will have 21 candidates running for Township trustee, myself included, and I just wanted to wish everybody good luck. Many of us have been waiting for 2020 to come for a long time. Anyone paying any attention at all knows that this board needs a new group of leaders. Since 2008, I have tried to represent our township in a positive light. I ran for charter commission in 2008 and only lost by eight votes. Even in defeat, I presented Monica Leisure a copy of the Wayne County Charter, which was provided to me by her own Ed Carey from the clerk's office. In 2012, I ran for supervisor and unfortunately was defeated by Janet Dunn. Supervisor Dunn ultimately pled guilty to election fraud in the spring of 2013, but nothing happened because nobody cared. Those days are over. In 2016, I ran against Christie Posey for clerk and was defeated. The really good thing about 2016 is that Tim Bussino was elected to the board as a trustee and he has been a bulldog, always fighting for the citizens of Macomb Township. Shortly after the November election in 2016, we had a tragic accident on Heidenreich north of 21 Mile where a young girl lost her life attempting to cross the road. Stephanie Byless and Rebecca Jones reached out to me and we formed a Facebook page called Citizens for Safety. Within a couple of weeks, we had 20,000 views and we were ultimately able to get our township board to pass a motion to extend and connect the sidewalks throughout the 21 Mile Heidenreich area, install streetlights throughout that same area, and then the state was able to help us reduce the school zone speed limit from 35 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. That remains one of the highlights of my life. In 2018, I ran against Leon Drolette to represent our district again on the county board at the county level. I had more votes on election day itself, but lost when the absentee ballots were tabulated later that night. Almost a win. So here we are tonight. I have been at the podium many, many times in the past, always trying to do the right thing, stating that part-time board members do not deserve full-time benefits. That was ultimately changed. Fighting for adequate manpower for our fire department, fighting for more deputy sheriffs in all three shifts to serve and protect us, fighting to remove trustee Dino Bucci from the sport for several months, which included the recall effort spearheaded by Tommy Soco. Now, I think it's time that we actually demand the formation of an ethics board. It is sad that we even have to have an ethics board, but we have a long history of political corruption in this township and it really needs to end.
Mr. Missig, your 30, your three minutes are up. Wind it up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Actually, to you, Ms. Dunn, you self-reported something to the Attorney General's office. Please do us all a favor and resign. You've made $720,000 in salaries since 2012. Apparently that wasn't enough. Everybody be safe, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the next citizen. You're free to speak.
Ryan?
Yeah.
It appears that Mr. Mann is in the attendees group and is muted, the attorney.
Okay.
Is there a way to unmute him?
Yes, I can promote him to panelist, but I need to know the last four digits of his phone number.
Uh, okay.
If you can get it, or I can even get it from Jaclyn.
Does Jaclyn have it?
Let me ask her.
I do not have it. It's 4132.
I don't see him on the list. He can raise his hand using *9.
Okay. Mr. Mann, if you can hear us, you can raise your hand. Not sure what happened there.
Would you like me to continue public comments?
Yeah, yes, so, yeah. Ms. Posey, what if he calls in and you give him the participant ID number? I did it, I just sent it to him again. I guess move on.
Okay. Now, Christie, it says that John, Mr. John Parkinson has an older Zoom client and he won't be able to speak unless he updates his client.
Oh, okay.
So, I'll move on to the next person.
Ryan, Mr. Mann's last four digits are 8656.
No, he's not in the list. Okay. Mr. Parkinson, you'll have to update your Zoom client in order to participate in public comments. Sorry for that. Frank Cusmano, you're up.
Yes, Frank Cusmano, 16188 Jenny Drive. I was going to be making public comments on some pertinent matters, substantive matters, but I'm going to instead focus on the lawsuit that was filed against Macomb Township and several other defendants. And to answer Charles Missig's question, I think you'll find the answer posted on the Macomb Township Voices page and the Macomb Township political page on Facebook. But it alleges in the complaint in paragraph 23 that Supervisor Dunn approached Mr. Assorti regarding concerns about an ethic ordinance that was to be voted on in an upcoming Board of Trustees meeting and that she was going to be in trouble and that others were going to use the ethics ordinance to throw her out. It continues through paragraphs 24, 25, 26, 27, 28. And it alleges criminal activity by members of the Board of Trustees and also unethical behavior. So the question becomes, why is it taking two and a half years for an ethics ordinance unless it's being deliberately slow-walked and stalled out to protect individuals who may have acted unethically and/or criminally? I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers of Macomb Township to have to wait for criminal indictments to have to be handed down. It has caused the local government to be dysfunctional in a failed township government. The role of government is to provide services that are so important and crucial that they cannot be left to the private sector. Why is everyone calling for Janet Dunn to resign? And I'll tell Janet Dunn right now, all my cards are always on the table. I am writing a court warrant, a complaint letter to Dana Nassel. It will be going out tomorrow and I will be seeking her removal from office for, among other things, the allegations that are contained in the complaint by Mr. Assorti. I think it's time, you know, the members of the board ran on a platform of let's keep moving Macomb Township forward. I don't believe that the activities, including possible extortion by members of the board against other members of the board to influence their decision-making process, is good government and I don't think that that is moving Macomb Township forward. And it sounds to me like that Janet Dunn may be a victim herself in all this and if she's in over her head, she should at least have the decency to step aside and let others take the torch and move things forward. Thank you and I appreciate all the good work that is being done by the members of the board, not implicated in any of these transgressions.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Raise your hand virtually. John Parkinson? He's using an older version of the Zoom client. I have two additional people that want to speak, starting with phone, our last digits of your phone number are 4132. You have the mic?
This is Greg Mann. I finally figured out how to try to get on through the system. It would not let me get on, so I don't have any comment to make at this point in time. I just wanted to let the board know that I am on and I thought that this public comment section was with regard to agenda items. I did not know it was open, public comment. But nonetheless, if I've got that wrong because I got on late due to a medical issue that I'm dealing with, I apologize. But other than that, I have nothing else to say at this point in time, so thank you guys. I'll listen in. If you could leave me unmuted, I'll mute myself.
All right, we have phone number ending in 1120.
Yes. Yes, John Parkinson, good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. Good evening, Board. John Parkinson, address is on file at clerk's office. Tonight, I want to ask some of you, the Board of Trustees, who swore to uphold the Constitution and serve the residents in which you reside over and were elected by, for a vote of no confidence of the supervisor Janet Dunn. Ms. Dunn, I and many others ask you to humbly resign as supervisor of Macomb Township effective medially. Next, I'd like to address Clerk Posey. Clerk Posey, I have a few questions for you. Would you care to explain to the board and to the residents about your close special friendship of a personal nature with Chief Phillips that occurred outside of work? After reports of Janet Dunn's transgression on both Macomb Township Voices Facebook group and Macomb County Circuit Court, why have you decided not to be transparent with the residents about your personal knowledge of Janet Dunn receiving cash? Why do you remain silent? Did you leverage your knowledge of Janet Dunn's transgression against the supervisor to coerce her to dismiss the HR general counsel and influence her on other votes? We were hoping you would restore faith in government and in doing so, we would appreciate your transparency in answering my above-forementioned questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Dial *9 on your phone and it'll raise your hand virtually and we can call on you. Mr. Townsopple? Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to take a brief moment to reiterate the importance of the ethics ordinance. I feel there's been some opportunities for us to add this to the agenda, to make this a priority. It's long overdue. We worked a lot of hours on this. I understand that, you know, it's a little bit intimidating for certain members that are impacted by the ethics ordinance and it's a little bit intimidating, the fact that there's an extra level of transparency around certain actions in our township, but given everything that's happened over the past several years and given what's happening right now, it's more important right here, right now than ever to put this ethics ordinance in place. And the residents in our community are growing tired of the excuses of why this isn't a priority, especially given some of the things that have been attempted to be placed on this agenda. So, we want to see this board in place. We want the ethics ordinance in place. We want it to be a priority and we want it done in a timely manner. The next point I wanted to make is that I am extremely concerned about why certain members of this board, they know who they are, that haven't taken a stance on these transgressions by Janet Dunn. This includes Mr. Oliver, Mrs. Smith, and Clerk Posey. I know that there was a lot of expectations, you know, a couple of these people are appointees. They're not even elected by the residents, but Clerk Posey was and there were high expectations of her to do things differently away from the Macomb Township way. And I'm concerned about her silence and lack of transparency regarding Janet Dunn's transgression. So, I'm asking Clerk Posey to share with the Macomb Township residents her personal knowledge as expressed to the legal counsel of Janet Dunn's transgression. The residents deserve truth and transparency.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
All right, Board, you need to move forward with the next item. This is Attorney Greg Mann.
Is there anyone waiting to comment?
Not that we can tell. There's nobody raising their hands. Everybody looks pretty silent on this side.
Is it saying, new business?
Yes, Janet.
Thank you. Under new business, we have a Water and Sewer Department request to approve payments. Pay estimate number 10 for the sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation. Mr. Wanglin, are you there?
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and Board members. Can you hear me, please?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, we can.
Thank you. Tonight, Water and Sewers asking for permission to approve pay estimate number 10. This will be payable to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services in the amount of $178,874.75. And as everyone's aware, this is the company that's been cleaning and feeding our sewers for the last approximately year and a half to two years. Water and Sewers reviewed this as well as engineering and we are recommending we move forward with this. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any questions on this? This is very familiar to us. We've been approving these right along as they get completed. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to pay this estimate. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to pay this estimate.
Madam Chair, Charlie Oliver, I move we pay this estimate of $178,874.75.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support by Goodhue.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor, trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue.
Yes.
Treasurer, trustee Bussino.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn.
Yes, thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Welcome. Next, we have from the Supervisor's Office, request to extend the state of emergency for an additional 30 days. Chief Phillips, are you there?
Yes.
Can you give us a date, please?
We're recommending an extension of the current state of emergency for an additional 30 days. As you're aware, the Board approved on March 27th a 30-day extension of the state of emergency that is set to expire April 26th. I'm recommending a 30-day extension in order for us to continue to access the equipment that we need for our response to the current pandemic. But with that, I would recommend a 30-day extension effective April 26, 2020.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Phillips?
Madam Chair, this is trustee Bussino. I don't know if this is a question or a statement, but last meeting that was mentioned, and Chief just mentioned again, that by staying in a local state of emergency will ensure that we get some necessary equipment for our first responders from the county level. I reached out to members of the county level, and it was communicated to me that at the county commission meeting, this was brought up, and that our first responders do not have to worry that if we don't declare a local state of emergency, that they're not going to get the required equipment from the county. This is what was communicated to me that was actually discussed at a county board meeting. So I have questions for you about this, Madam Supervisor, but I just want to, I think Chief is being sincere when he says that, but I just want the first responders to know that they're going to get their equipment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, Charlie Oliver, I would move on that state of emergency for additional 30 days, starting 4/26/2020.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support by Smith.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Ms. Posey, would you?
Madam Chair, this is trustee Bussino again. I would like to have some discussion now that we have a motion to amend. Madam Chair, I would like to amend this motion that it be a 14-day extension till our next board meeting. And the reason for that is our local state of emergency protocol during this pandemic really falls under the umbrella of a countywide emergency plan. At the county level, the county commissioners have required that the county executive and its departments provide a comprehensive list of what the county has spent outside of its normal budget as part of the coronavirus. I asked you to provide this to the Board on March 19th. We had one response a couple of days later that there was no list at that time. I would make a motion that we, following the pattern of what the county has done, to make this a 14-day extension till our next meeting, and ask that you provide, this Board, what being the state of emergency, what cost is being covered outside of our normal budget.
I'm not sure what you're asking for, Mr. Bussino, but...
I'm asking for, I'm asking for this to be amended, to be a 14-day extension instead of a 30-day extension. And in that time, you provide to the Board what we are spending on Corona outside of our normal budget.
Okay, Board, this is Greg Meehan, so you'll need to decide whether you can get a second on trustee Bussino's motion to amend.
Yes, this is Nancy Nevers. I'll support that.
So there was motion by, I've forgotten who, but Charlie Oliver, and supported by Nancy Nevers, to extend this for another 30 days.
No, Madam Chair, I made a motion to amend it for 14 days. This is trustee Bussino. And Nancy supported that amendment.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, maybe for yours. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll on Mr. Oliver's motion?
This is for 30 days?
Mr. Oliver, are you willing to amend your motion?
No, I want to leave it 30 days.
Okay. Okay. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bussino?
No.
Trustee Nevers?
No.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries.
Madam Chair, this is Karen Goodhue. Can I ask a question, please?
Certainly.
That 30 days can always be amended, correct?
So, Board, now you have to vote on the motion to amend it to 14 days by trustee Bussino, because there was a motion by him and second by Ms. Nevers. So you need to make a vote on that now.
Trustee Bussino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
No.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Treasurer Goodhue?
No.
Clerk Posey, no, and Supervisor Dunn?
No. Thank you. Now we will have General Counsel update. Mr. Meehan, please.
Yeah, Board, a couple of things that I wanted to bring you aware of. Number one, we are, again, staying in line with all of the requirements that we have for your different departments. We're meeting the requirements of issuing opinions for property developments and other types of permits. So working with Jim is easy, and he's a wonderful gentleman to work with. Number two is, as you are aware, the complaint that was filed by Mr. Assorti, by his counsel, Kathleen Bogus, was filed yesterday. I did not receive a copy until late yesterday by Ms. Bogus, and I am in discussions with her. I did forward a copy of the complaint over to the insurance carrier, MML, Mrs. Diane Nguyen. And like I say, I'd like to indicate that, you know, these are allegations that I think are serious and something that the Board at some point in time, it's not on the agenda today, but at some point in time can take up or should take up on how it wishes to proceed. Thirdly, we have some issues with regard to the water mill hearing. Mr. Assorti has given us two dates that he would like to have the water mill hearing. One is the 27th of April, and the other is the 29th. And I would prefer, just out of my own personal issues, that we have it on the 29th, and that we schedule a special meeting for those purposes only. And so at this point, I'd like the Board to make a motion, if it would be so inclined, to schedule the water mill hearing for Mr. Thomas Sorti for the 29th at your normal time. I like to start it before seven, if we could, but it's your decision. You can start it any time that you feel that's appropriate.
If I might ask a question, this is Nancy Nevers, regarding water mill. Would this be something that would be akin to a closed session where we would be here at town hall, you know, going by all of the safety measures, social distancing, masks, gloves, et cetera? Or is this something that we would be handling in a different manner?
That's all going to depend upon Mr. Assorti and what his selection is. I do intend to reach out to Ms. Bogus, his counsel, after the Board votes on the date as to whether or not it's going to be an open meeting or a closed. And of course, if it's going to be a closed, we will want to find a way to do it in person, but with the safety measures involved. And if it's going to be an open, we can do it through the processes that are present right now, or we can do it through, you know, an actual meeting, again, making sure that proper safety and protocol is reached. But I don't know what their selection's going to be, but I have been assured that once we select a date, I will be able to get that information to the Board so we could prepare appropriately.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is trustee Bussino. Greg, sent it to your report, and can I just ask you a question about something else you sent us about ethics real quick?
Anything you want, sir.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Absolutely.
So you shared some other things in the email, so I can't read the whole email, but I'm going to put it this way. There, you had sent us some language that you were concerned in ethics ordinance, which I agree and understand, and we can get that fixed. But I don't think there's anything that you put in the email that would prevent us from taking applications for the Board since we're not interviewing, appointing them. Is that correct? There's nothing really that we can advertise that we're taking applications for a potential Board, is there, based on your email?
No. In fact, if I can, if you'll remember, in March, I had indicated to the Board that I had read the ethics ordinance. This was the issue I had as to who was to be selected on that ethics ordinance because of the language used. I agreed that this is an important ordinance that needs to be put in place. But I also thought that because of the need to get people to apply and then to interview, that it would be best to set the ethic ordinance and the application process to occur. I mean, the application process can occur any time, but the meeting of in-person interviews would occur in May, because I think the Governor's going to release many of the restrictions. So I still hold the concept that May is a good time to get your people in front of you and make that happen, where you can do it in a live meeting. But no, Tim, there is not one thing that would prevent the Board today asking anybody that is desirous to engage in the process to put their application in.
And then, perfect. I'm just going to follow up. You remember our last time we were together as a Board, Treasurer Goodhue had said that our former deputy supervisor, Francesca Biondo, actually had adjusted the document, and I confirmed that with Francesca, and I think that document is ready to go and for us to post. So that's good news. Thank you.
Yeah. And then what I hoped we would do is we would, in May, have applications for you to interview and make decisions, and then also in May, for everybody to look at that language issue and make a decision on what that means, and get going on it. Get people involved, get the ordinance in effect, and have everything moved forward, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have comments.
Madam Chair, I think we have to make a motion on wanting to have the water mill. I think Mr. Meehan asked us for that. So I'll make a motion that we have the water mill on April 29th.
And this is Nancy Nevers, oh, I'm sorry.
Motion by Ms. Nancy.
Question, what time?
Do you want to do it at 6:30, a little half an hour earlier? That's fine with me.
Mr. Meehan is the 29th at 5:00, 6:00. What's your pleasure?
I will, you know, Ms. Dunn, I serve at the behest of the Board, so whatever you desire to do, I'll be there. So whatever's convenient for the Board members in terms of their lives, their families, and making sure we can ensure safety for both the participant and any of the public that desires to attend. And, you know, one of the things that we will talk about after you make this is, you know, how we can have the public attend without being necessarily there, and clearly, we can conduct it by way of a Zoom meeting, even if everybody else is at the township. Again, we have to watch that social distancing issue.
Okay. So, Mr. Oliver, would 6:00 work for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine?
Yep, that'll work.
So, anybody else have conflict with that?
No. No. April 29th, 6:00 would be fine.
Okay. You want to make that a motion?
I will, I make that in the form of a motion. The water mill meeting will be April 29th at 6:00 p.m.
Motion by Ms. Good... Supported. Oliver can hold the water mill hearing April 29th at 6:00 p.m. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bussino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. Now we'll move on to trustees' comments. Mr. Bussino?
Yes, Madam Chair, thanks. And my, first of all, I just want to thank everybody that called in tonight in navigating through this new norm of technology. I know it can get frustrating, and it is for all of us, but thank you for staying engaged. What I want to bring forward to you as supervisors, maybe who in your comments tonight can address this, or we as a Board can address this, and it's two concerns with residents. And I want to give some background on this. Last week, we got an email from our Parks and Rec Director, and I agreed with the request that lawn maintenance be done for our buildings and mowing lawns in the township-owned parks and buildings, and it will give us a head start when baseball season starts in the ball fields. I agree with the premise of that. And I also agree with, early on in this pandemic, that it was, we told builders that they could go out and finish their roofs to make sure that leaks were not going to happen into the homes. But what I want is some kind of indication from our township Board or your office on where we stand on landscaping in our township for residents' homes. I know some people cannot get things done, and especially if, you know, they have something that limits their ability to get outside and do their lawn. And if we're doing it as a township, I want to make sure that we are giving some kind of confidence to the residents that they're not going to be ticketed. And furthermore, I had a resident today tell me that he has a leak in his own roof, and he wants to get it fixed, and he cannot get a rougher to come out of his, out to his house, because lots of roughers are worried about the $1,000 fine, especially in this time where their work is limited and they're not getting a lot of work. So I don't, I haven't really seen anything in this township, and maybe I'm missing, is the sheriffs made a determination on what we're going to do on our township with regards to landscaping roughers, other similar business, which I think leaks in a residence roof would be essential. But hopefully, maybe you can comment on that in your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nevers?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to take a different tack here. I'd like to share some thoughts I have about what's going on in our country and in our state of Michigan. And to everyone listening, I'd like them to consider and think about this. It's now being widely reported that this Wuhan virus is actually more virulent than projected, but, and this is the key, far less... projected, but, and this is the key, far less deadly. I just want our residents to understand that and to not be afraid when the country starts opening back up. We should all continue to wear masks, gloves, and continue to practice social distancing for as long as that makes sense. However, we must get back to work and to some normalcy. And I just want to thank everyone and say stay safe and stay well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, Charlie Oliver, trustee. Just to follow up, Tim, on that, thanks for thinking about the landscapers and the homeowners that need to get out in their yard. Landscapers need to get out and do their work, feed their families. Most of the landscapers I've talked to, that is my industry, along with my business, but most of the landscapers I've talked to are willing to wait till May. And it appears that the Governor is going to release, relax some of the restrictions on landscapers. It sounds like she's got a plan. There's quite a lot of our groups that are up there dealing with her on it, along with the greenhouse growers groups, the farm groups. It appears that there's going to be a little bit of relaxing, and then it's going to be up to the individual people to take it upon themselves, a landscaper instead of putting four or five people in a truck, maybe two. They'll be told probably not to stop at a gas station and get snacks early. They'll be told not to conjugate for lunch. All them things will be taking place. And then when it goes to retail centers for like the garden centers, the same activity will happen there. Where spacing will be very important for the people. So that's going to be addressed, I think, real soon in first of May. But on another note, I just want to really compliment the parents of our community and in our state and our country that all of a sudden went to work every day, and then now they're sitting home with two, three kids, one child. And it was quite of an adjustment, and it seems like people really do adjust. And my hat's off to any parent that's dealing with that. And again, thank you for all the nurses, the rescue workers, the police department. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on then to treasurer's comments. Ms. Goodhue?
Yes, we've had a lot of people calling and asking about their April water bill. And I worked with Mr. Wanglin to be able to put it on the website and on Facebook. The April water bills did not go out. They will go out when we get back to some normalcy here. And so it is online for many people. Their water bills have been read, and they are online if they so choose to go online and pay. But I would not worry about it until you get that bill in the mail. We will not be issuing any penalties or anything for March or April as well. So just be patient with us, and you will get your bill. And if it helps your budget to be able to pay it online, you can do so. And also, I just want to make a clarification because it was said that we need the ethics ordinance. I do believe that we voted on the ethics ordinance and approved it unanimously. It's the Board that we're waiting for to be put into place. So the ethics ordinance is in place, but we're waiting on the Board. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Okay? Thank you.
Ms. Posey, clerk's comment.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I just wanted to first address the candidates that have filed. If you wish to withdraw from your candidate, withdraw your candidate filings, it must be done by 4:00 this Friday, April 24th. It must include a letter requesting to withdraw, but the letter has to have your signature on it. It cannot be accepted without a signature. The letter can be left in our Dropbox, or my office is available on Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. to assist anybody if they choose to withdraw. Second, there was a reference to my personal friendships. My personal friendships and what I do outside of council, my work is none of anybody's business. And I, in the event I stand to financial gain or a loss as a result of my actions, I will vote. On a vote that I make, I will happily recuse myself. Lastly, I'll address the Assorti lawsuit that was filed against Township Supervisor and myself. I completely deny any claims of wrongdoing against me. I voted just cause exists to remove Assorti, subject to a water mill hearing because of the evidence of the evaluations of the people he worked with, the report from legal counsel Dean Yodis, and his inability to work with the Board as a whole. After an evaluation conducted by those that worked with Mr. Assorti, and on the eve of his knowing that his employment would come into question, he fired off a vague email advising the Board that he knew of certain undisclosed actions or certain unnamed Board members that he reported to the Department of Justice. Evidently, based upon the allegations in his complaint, he was aware of these issues months prior and failed to disclose them to the Board until after the personal evaluations were reviewed. In my opinion, Mr. Assorti's vague threats were an attempt to intimidate unnamed Board members to save his job. Mr. Assorti's claims are based on lies, speculation, and many untruths. Mr. Assorti's own words, and I quote, "upon information and belief," unquote, clearly shows speculation as to any involvement I had with regard to his termination in consultation with Supervisor Dunn. I unequivocally deny that at any time I in any way coerced or forced Supervisor Dunn to do anything against her wishes as it pertains to Mr. Assorti's employment. I was made aware of vague allegations regarding the supervisor at or around the same time other Board members were made aware. I immediately contacted Attorney Mann, indicated the supervisor may have committed a possible crime pursuant to the memo from Mr. Assorti, or Mr. Assorti is attempting to blackmail Board members. This resulted in self-reporting by Supervisor Dunn, of which no action has been taken. Excuse me. The reality of this matter is Mr. Assorti's employment has been contentious from the start of his agreement. The fairy tale told in this lawsuit is clearly nothing but a political smear campaign against myself in an attempt to affect my reelection to office. It is ironic, and I am sure by no coincidence, that this lawsuit was filed on the filing deadline for elective office. I am confident that residents will see through this defamatory lawsuit and charade as nothing more than a political smear campaign in an attempt by Mr. Assorti to keep me from being reelected and the opportunity for someone who supports him to sit in my seat. I will vigorously fight for reelection and what is best for this township. I have no further comment and will refer further matters related to this to Council once retained. I have nothing else, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you. I will move on to supervisors' comments. I want to take a minute here to thank Chief Phillips. He has been the emergency manager coordinator for the COVID-19 virus and has spent countless hours going to meetings, participating in discussions with county emergency management. The reason that McComb Township is doing fairly well as far as cases go for the virus, well, in large part to our first responders and under the direction of Chief Phillips. The second item, Ms. Posey just talked about her position. I would like to tell you mine about this lawsuit that was filed. The claims in that lawsuit are filled with inaccuracies, lies, and distortions of the truth. I have been the township supervisor for seven years and five months, and prior to that, a township supervisor for 17 years. During my time in office, the votes and the decisions I have made were mine and mine alone. The claim that Mr. DiCaro and Clerk Posey used any type of information to convince me or force me to take a position with regard to Mr. Assorti's employment are ridiculous. In fact, it is the opposite. I believe Mr. Assorti's memo to the Board was an attempt to scare and intimidate me. Mr. Assorti's administrative leave came after many issues, particularly those related to his performance evaluation done by the department heads. I look forward to having my day in court with regard to these claims, and ultimately, the truth will come out. As this matter is pending litigation, I will have no further comment going forward. The last thing is, please stay healthy. Observe the social distancing, wear your masks and your gloves. Thank you. Last thing is a closed session, and we adjourn to closed session on a motion.
Madam Chair, can I just ask, this trustee Busino, do we disconnect from this call?
Yes, trustee.
Okay, okay, thanks.
All right. But everybody, to be proper for the Open Meetings Act, we have to list the basic reasons for why we're going into closed session. And we're going to be going into closed session to discuss the written memo that I had provided to the Board and provide some additional explanations. So it's the receipt of my written legal memorandum that you're going into closed session to review, okay? And I just want that to be that's got to be in the document.
Greg, I'm glad you brought that up. Is it a legal, is it a written opinion about pending litigation?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So with that said, can you guys make the motion to go into closed session? And thank you. And I'll wait for you to call me back.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion. This is Karen, to go into closed session.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Supported by Mrs. Nevers.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to enter into closed session. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Busino?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. We are adjourned to closed session. We have returned from closed session. There was one item discussed. Ms. Posey, were there any motions to be made tonight in regards to this matter?
Madam Chair, we're looking for, making a motion. They have Attorney Mann provide us with guidance on how to proceed with the complaint files.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Supported by Smith?
Supported by Ms. Smith. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Busino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Here, yes.
My motion carries.
That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Clerk Posey, Madam Chair, this is...
Motion by...
Karen Goodhue makes a motion to adjourn.
Nancy Nevers supports.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Ms. Nevers, to adjourn. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Busino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Thank you, and we are adjourned.